Alright, everyone. Welcome to the Millville Planning Board meeting. It is June 28th at 6 o'clock. We have three members of the planning board with us tonight. Myself, Chris Drew, and Justin Allen. We also have Gabe Trevor, our interim planner, and Lincoln Barber, our building inspector, who's with us. Alright, Gabe, what's first on the agenda?
We have three agendas to approve. So I resent those to the to the board. Last time, we briefly discussed them prior to the last meeting where we weren't able to make forum.
That's right.
A little over a month ago, so I don't think there should be any issues. I fixed a couple, just a couple date things on there. But if everyone, if people want to give them another look before we move forward.
Sure thing, yeah, there was February 22nd, March 8th, and April 26th.
Yep.
Alright, is there a motion to accept those meeting minutes?
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
All three of them?
All three.
Alright.
I will second all three.
Alright, and Justin, second say, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that's that.
Do we want to start? So Jack just logged on, hello.
Hey, Jack.
Hey.
Good to see you again.
So.
Good to see you, Pam.
I think we might want to start with Lincoln, just so maybe Jack can get, it'll give Jack a good sense of some of the issues we have.
Sure thing. Alright, Lincoln, I know you sent us a letter, but do you want to, do you want to kind of give us a rundown and go through your questions one at a time?
Who's Jack?
Jack is, I know I haven't even gotten a chance to explain who Jack is to everybody because we didn't have a meeting last month. So as you know, we've been working with CMRPC and the towns of Oxbridge and Mendon to try to find a new town planner. Our efforts to find a new town planner hit a couple of snags. And the town administrator from Mendon had the idea to submit for a grant that would get us some money to put toward a, and Jack, please cut me off if I get any of this wrong, but towards a more experienced planner who could come in and train up somebody, some of these more junior level people that we're seeing apply for the position and help us, our three towns, kind of have better planning services to be able to offer.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
So did everyone get to see the letter that I sent?
Honestly, if you did, I don't remember.
I have not seen it.
I don't have a copy of it with me, but I know what it's about. Basically, there's two items which really blossom into six or seven. But the first one was an individual special permit granted. And to me, it's a demonstrative of all the special permits that are granted in that there is no mechanism to monitor what's been granted and keep track of the timeframe and the rules or stipulations that are involved in the permit. There was a flurry of in-law apartments that were applied for, most of which I suggested those people go apply for. One of them was 115 Kempton Road. The gentleman's name, Ray Roy. So because I, for some reason, get a feed from Zillow once a month, I look through it just to keep abreast of what's going on in town. And lo and behold, the property 115 Kempton Road changed hands. I'm fairly certain his daughter is the new owner, but I don't know that for a fact. And so I went back and I reviewed the special permit. And yes, there is a specific mention in there that says, when and if the property is sold, the permit needs to either, for lack of a better word, disappear, or the new property owner has to go back before the planning board, state their case, and have the special permit modified or reissued. I don't know how the board wants to handle that. So looking at the facts, I think on the surface, it would seem this was probably their plan all along. And it would have been easy just to say that to the board, but I don't think that's what happened. So now I have a special permit, which as far as I'm concerned, is null and void because the Ray Roy no longer owns that house. It's my job to go enforce this stuff, which leads me to, you know, Part A or Part A through Z. The planning board issues a wide number of special permits. Some of them have time restrictions, some of them have specific legal restrictions, and there is no mechanism in place. And I certainly don't keep any kind of a detailed calendar like that. Never mind would I go through your decisions and record all the stuff that needs to be kept track of. But if we're going to issue special permits, then we need to keep track of what stipulations were included, what timeframes were included, and then follow through on it. And this goes to a broader issue of, excuse me, you know, how far do we want to go into people's lives? And I'm the guy that ends up saying, well, yeah, now you got to tear that kitchen out, or now you have to restore this house back to what it was. And the thought process across the state of Massachusetts is changing in regard to housing, in regard to the invasiveness of local government into people's lives. I know that's especially true in Millville. And I can tell you as the zoning official, the last thing I want to do is go into somebody's home and say, yeah, you agreed to this, so you've got to, you've, you know, got to make some drastic change, which is also a huge financial impact. So I snuck all that crap in the back door talking about Ray Roy at 115 Kempton Road. And I think the board ought to, in the immediate future, address 115 Kempton. But you know what? If we, if we, and I include myself, and I'll go as long as it takes, want to, you know, have special permits for things like this and have hearings and make people jump through hoops, then we need to have a system that's accountable and fair and equitable, and then enforce it. Because I do stuff every day. I just busted my neighbor and I'm going to fine him, my neighbor. It's very unpleasant, and I'm the fall guy and the bad guy. And yeah, I signed on for that, but let's try and figure out how to do the right thing here on a consistent basis.
So can, can I, can I comment?
Go ahead.
So.
I have no idea what your timeframe is for all the rest of the agenda.
So I think what you brought up and described are two different types of things that we, that we, you know, would need to keep track of. I mean, we can certainly take care of managing a calendar that we can add specific dates in the future to, like, to follow up on and whatnot. So I think certainly just that shared calendar for the planning board, we can add those details to it. I don't know how we keep track of home sales, though, because you got, you got tipped off from something that our calendar solution, you know, if it was in place, would have bypassed anyway.
But doesn't, but a decision like that, would it have had to have been registered with the Registry of Deeds? Or filed with the Registry of Deeds? So, yes, it would kind of bypass us, but then, once it changed hands, wouldn't it automatically, you know, if we say it's for, it's for, it's for owner A and owner C comes in, I mean, I understand, I know it's not that simple. I know it's not automatically going to take out a kitchen or anything like that. But wouldn't there be some kind of, I don't know, like, I don't want to say legal ramification, but a legal ramification, because it has been filed. And then at that point, Lincoln or whomever can, should be able to say, well, look, here's your decision. And again, I understand it's not that simple, but here's your decision, here's what you agreed to. The house is sold, so person C needs to come back and do this process and get the reapproval. Or if the board denies it, then you have to rip it out. Again, I know it's not that simple, but isn't that kind of the process we're working from?
Did you have a thought, Jack?
I'll just interject, you know, I, I've been in this business quite a bit. And when we get to me and the agenda, I can explain my history. But I think the building commissioner has got a couple good questions or concerns. The first one is, special permits are supposed to be recorded. And I think that gentleman was trying to get to that. And in a closing, any attorney of the buyer should automatically see there's a special permit on his property. And lo and behold, you need to come to the planning board evidently. I haven't seen the decisions to, to get approval on the new owner if they indeed want to keep, I guess it's an accessory unit. I'm not sure what we're talking about, but, so you know, that's the way it usually works. In many towns, they'll have tickler files, they'll have your administrative assistant or whomever send out letters. Sometimes they're done on yearly basis. Most of the time, these things are done by the ZBA. A little, it's the first time I've ever heard of the planning board dealing with this. So I think he has legitimate concerns. And I think if we, I've done this before, you know, you're going to have to maybe do a little homework, and I can help if I come, if this comes to fruition and go back and see what special permits you've issued for these different items and see if they've been recorded. There's a way to do it, but it's, it's a pain. It's a pain in the butt. The second thing the building commissioner is bringing up is a bigger issue, and that is whether these should be done by special permit at all, and should they be by right? And that's a policy question that many towns are struggling with. And I, I can offer advice if you get to that.
Thanks, Jack.
And I have to say, I'm trying to beat the building commissioner in the length of his beard. I'll get there.
Historically, the planning board, and this is no slight on the members present this evening, hasn't done anything with special permits except stick them in a drawer. So when somebody comes to me or I have a question about, you know, this use here was brought to my attention, is this a permitted use? Did they obtain a special permit? The answer to that question, did they obtain a special permit? If so, when and what does it say? That is extremely difficult to answer. And that, that historical information needs to be added to the dialogue as we go forward. Things like this one here, I don't issue a building permit until that special permit's been recorded on the deed. That's the easiest way for me to deal with that. But that's only good from 2021 on, you know? But hopefully we're building a procedure here going forward.
Right.
I bring my.
Going back is difficult. Yep.
Again.
I was just going to say.
From the board itself, I thought that was typically how it was supposed to be done, was that they were supposed to produce, you know, once we make a decision, they're supposed to file it with the Registry of Deeds.
Yeah, but they don't.
Somehow we're supposed to get a copy back that it was in fact done before any permit would be issued, whether it's major, minor, or anything in between. Again, that was my understanding of kind of our process, if you will, that, you know, that step A, step C wasn't supposed to happen until step A and step B were done, you know, being filing it at.
Historically, that is not.
Okay.
We don't have a good process in place for that because I think, I think like a person who goes and files that and they're supposed to send a copy to us and it goes to the, I don't know, wherever it goes, we don't always see it, and especially in the last two years without a planner, we haven't seen it. So he's absolutely right. The process is broken. And I had to go through this myself a couple of months back of trying to dig up special permit language from 10 years ago. It's binders in a drawer. Good luck. And it's not in much order. It's, it's not a good process.
No. And we're not going to solve it tonight, so let's move on to the next one.
Yep.
I think these need to have some time spent on them.
Agreed.
The second issue that I've had two separate businesses that have been granted a site plan approval and special permits in recent time approach me and say, one wanted to put a office trailer on the property for a dual purpose. One was a waiting room for one of the businesses. This is at, I want to say 240 Main Street. I'm not sure that's the right number. This is Sean Scangio's Diggs Business and then Andy's Used Car. So it would be a waiting room for Andy's Used Car, and this other half of it would be office space for Sean Scangio. There is no provision in the zoning bylaw for a trailer for any use other than temporary housing for a home being rebuilt due to some sort of natural disaster. There's no other mention. And for everything that I want to, and when I go to court, there's the first clause in the very beginning that says, any use not specifically enumerated herein is not allowed. The other business is 18 Prospect Street, which I will forever call the pot shop. And they want to maximize their business potential by having a couple of pre-manufactured containers brought on site and more or less permanently installed. They would be that as far as I'm concerned and would adhere to the building code as far as that's concerned. These are very well-engineered and thought-out containers that retail for in the neighborhood of a quarter million dollars that enable them to make product from the raw material that they're growing there. And as far as I'm concerned personally, Millville gave them the green light and said, come do whatever you want, we want your business. So I think they've, they are going to maximize the inside of that building. Wouldn't shock me if down the road, the area that's being built out as retail turns into more growing area or the retail end of it's really not where they're going to make their money. And they have plenty of parking space. They have plenty of electricity. So when they come to the planning board and say, we want to modify the site plan and the special permit, it would be nice to have the tools in place to make that a seamless hearing process and say, yes, no, maybe, and these are the reasons why.
They actually did it, I believe it was our last meeting. And I think this was becoming back with some more information because we had some suggestions to make it a little bit better on location and things of that nature.
Yeah, 18 Prospect gave us a heads up that this is something they wanted to look into. And we had a nice discussion about what we'd be looking for from a board because it would be a permanent structure, like you can call it a trailer all you want, but it's going to live there. But they have not come back before us formally yet. The other.
Cassie's told me that she wants to get this construction process well underway and have a pretty good, you know, progress on that and know they're looking at the end of the road before she dives heavily into this additional use.
Yeah.
They've had a bumpy road till now. They just got a partial building permit, and they still have some engineering work to get a complete building permit.
Yeah. The other one, I don't remember what you said the street was, but they have not, we have not heard from them at all about a trailer.
No, and I said it's Main Street.
It would be 240 Main Street. So that's the store, I believe that's the store.
The storage place, right?
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, it's not the store.
226.
Oh.
Oh.
I may have the number wrong. It's an existing building. It's known by the old timers as Bowen's Garage. It has the big dump trucks out front from Diggs Construction. The left-hand side of the property is used by Diggs, the right hand, and the front portion of the building is used by Andy's Car Repair and Sean's father, JHI Construction, I believe is the name of his business. He rents like a business condo, if you will, I don't know what you want to call it, but. And so, you know, this is the tip of the iceberg. Who knows what else is coming? And Millville's obviously trying to attract business. So we need to have our rules a little more focused on business and have anticipated some of these additional uses. If you get Jack involved and he goes through the zoning bylaw, I mean, it doesn't take long to figure out, we've never really had business and haven't put a lot of planning into business. And the rules are very Spartan at best.
You're not the first town, believe me. Can I ask a question, Dan?
Yeah.
Lincoln, is, is, let's deal with the trailer first. You would not, and I don't even know what we're talking about, but would you consider this accessory use to the major use? Because that's a different platform.
He said it's going to be temporary because I'm just trying to amass enough capital to make a permanent addition on the building, which would also require a site plan review and so on. But.
Yeah, it seems like a modification to the site plan review may be in order. The temporary, that's up to you, how long you want to make it temporary, and maybe the planning board.
It is.
You know, in a lot of.
Absolutes.
Yeah, a lot of towns I've worked in, as far as these amendments to site plans, there was a hierarchy that we had. The lowest hierarchy was, it was administrative. And that would be, you, the building commissioner or the applicant would come to me and they want to do this. And I'd look at it, I'd make an opinion, I'd call the chairperson. And if they thought it was administrative, I sign off on it and off it goes. The second tier was, no, this is beyond administrative. They need to come to the planning board, but with no public hearing. And then the third tier is, holy mackerel, this is a major, it could have major impacts. We're having a public hearing. So that's the way, and I can help formulate that into a policy or rules and regs or something. And is this, these containers, are they inside the building or outside?
No, they would be outside. They're going to have hazardous materials in them. They're laboratories. They are fire hazards. They have explosive potential. They are very sophisticated manufacturing process-specific containers. And there's, there's a whole lot involved.
Yeah, Pam, it sounds to me that might take a full public hearing. Or at least, you need to get some peer review from a specialist who deals in this. This is what we used to do. And Hudson, my last stop, we permitted five or six of these. And we called in peer review engineers on the different facets. I don't know what one Lincoln's talking about, but you do need to be careful on that.
I believe 18 Prospect was running this by, I think they have, because of the way that the cannabis control commission works. I do believe they were going to like the state fire inspector, whatever that position is. So last, last time they talked to us, that was what they, what was going on apparently.
Well, then I think your, at least your fire chief has to look at it, right?
Oh, certainly, there's a lot involved. I've taken a lot of recent training because of these, this specific site. And I hope to get a video of a presentation I attended a couple of weeks ago and get the fire department and the board of health to sit down and maybe planning if they want to. It was about an hour and 20 minutes. It went from the beginning to the end, and it was a real eye-opener on, on what goes on in these little tight spaces with closed doors and what the potential for, you know, having a serious event occur, you know?
And they want, they want a tight space. They want a climate-controlled tight space.
Yeah.
Well, as you outgrow, you can always pick that thing up and move it, too. She's already told me that, you know, this site is very limiting size-wise. It was just a foot in the door. And I don't know if the board's aware, but I'll tell you, she made an offer to myself and the chief of police probably a year ago to come down and view the facility in Cranston. And I said to her about 10 days ago, I think I'm finally ready to go down and see what you do down there and, and see what you have for equipment and, you know, how it all works, the way you run it. And she said, oh, well, we don't own it anymore. We've sold it. The whole site's been disassembled. There's nothing but a vacant building. Sorry. So all the eggs are in the basket in Millville. And gives you a little idea of where, where her head is going with this business plan. That's the two things I wanted to speak about. Obviously, we're not going to cover either one of them in any great detail tonight, but I think they need some attention.
No, I agree with you, Lincoln. Thanks for bringing these up. And hopefully, we can figure out a way to address them in the short term.
And Mr. Roy at 115 Kempton Road has a 60-day time limit from sale of property. And I work very much on the principle of, everything I do should carry forward and people look back at. So I think that I need to act if the 60 days expires or the board needs to act, or send them a letter. We're aware there's been a change in the ownership and you need to come back and speak to us something so that a process is established for special permits and especially with these in-law apartments.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, when he applied, I mean, he was talking about eventually, didn't we discuss this? That he was talking about transferring the property to.
But it didn't sound like it was going to be in a couple of weeks or months.
Yeah, the way it sounded, it sounded like within a, within a couple of years, not, not this, not this soon. So I don't know.
More than that decision either.
No, but we did explain to him, I remember, in, in our meetings with him, that what would happen if the property got sold. He is aware of it. So I would feel, I mean, unless the board, my other four members feel differently, I would have no problem sending a letter.
Yeah, no, I think it's, I think it's responsible, we know about it, so let's make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah. Alright, perfect.
I agree.
Help us put that letter together.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you want to send me language, I can, I'll be in the office on Thursday, so I can, I can send.
Alright, perfect. Anything else, Lincoln?
I'm sure there is, but you've only got a half an hour. Jack, nice to meet you. I hope to work within the future.
Alright, thanks.
I hope so, too, Lincoln.
I'll be hanging out if you need me, but I'm going to turn off the picture for now.
Alright.
I don't want to distract you.
Alright, what else do we got, Gabe?
Um, all we have, well, maybe, yeah, I'll just go through some of the other stuff before we get to Jack. I guess the one other thing is I sent these before the meeting that was supposed to happen last. The business cert, we have three or four outstanding business certificates. I would recommend that we just send them back out to the, I think I sent them to you, Pam. You should have them in your inbox. I would recommend that the board, we like, we revisit this at the next meeting because we did discuss having a more in-depth process for business certificate approval. So if, to give board members the chance to, to look at the properties.
I'm forwarding those along to Justin and Chris. So that way you have a moment to take a look at those. I think when Lincoln had joined us, I think at one point, and mentioned like, you know, wouldn't be unheard of to drive by one of these places if we felt like it was something that we needed to check in. If we felt like it was something um that we needed to check in on before we just kind of uh give the, or not hold objection, I suppose would be the better way of saying it. Lincoln?
Yeah, wha- what do you mean business certificate?
Um, basically, the businesses apply for um for like a renewal of their town business certificate and it has to go through the planning board.
No, it, it has nothing to do with the planning board. It's issued by the clerk through Mass General Law. And your approval or disapproval has absolutely no bearing on what the clerk does.
Okay, well.
So does mine. It has no bearing.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to know. We, we've been getting it in our inbox and then giving them back to the clerk.
Yes.
And I guess there's a concern that maybe our process of input isn't as, you know, could, could be more in-depth.
Well, I, I communicate with the clerk uh when I see them and I have an objection, but it's, it's uh my responsibility to then send a letter to the certificate holder and say, I'll, I'll just use it, for instance, the uh I can't think of the guy's name, the uh abandoned use of the car repair business on Chestnut Hill Road. Uh, the property is directly opposite Hill Street. Um, they went through a divorce. The property was vacant for three or four years. Then the divorce finally settled. He got the property back. Uh, in my opinion, that use was discontinued. When he came back in and reapplied for his business certificate, clerk issued it. I told her, no, that is not a uh a permitted use at this point. And she said, Lincoln, I have no choice. I'm going to issue it. You do what you need to do. And I sent him a letter that said, that is a uh, an abandoned use. You have no permit to run any sort of business there at this point in time. If you do, I will uh pursue you legally.
Mm-hmm.
And if you want to reopen your business, you need to go to the planning board and, and apply for a special permit. So that is, that's kind of what you need to do. And ultimately, I guess I would be your enforcement arm.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's a zoning violation, but unfortunately, those business certificates are strictly a money grab by the state through the town clerk to uh pick up twenty-five bucks in and acknowledge that yes, there is a business being run at such and such address.
Yeah.
It has no legal bearing. And if you read the back of it, it's quite clear. And I've gone to court numerous times on these things. It says on there, this in no way gives you the right to run a business in the town. If there may be many other permits and or laws that you need to adhere to before you open up your business. So yes, it's a great idea for the planning board to review them and voice their opinion. And if you've got a strong one, send it to me and I'll act on it. But um.
Okay. That's good.
I don't think you can have any sway on it whatsoever.
Okay. Well, thank you. Seriously, Lincoln, thank you for that input. I was not aware of that context to it. Um, so I guess Pam, if we want to revisit these three at the next meeting and sort of give the board a chance to voice any objections, and then we can, we can talk about sending a letter or talking to Lincoln about sending a letter or something along those lines.
Perfect. I think this provides um some clarity to that issue that we did not know.
Right.
What the next steps were appropriate.
Right. Well, that's it um on, on that end. Um, there's also the question of membership and reorganization. Um, so I don't know if the board members are aware.
Yeah, so um uh, I did hear from Bill today that he, he's going to be submitting his letter of resignation. So we will be a three-person board. Um, we do need to reorganize because we never did that. I think we were waiting for a meeting when Bill could join us. Um, and we do, um, uh, Gabe was kind enough earlier today to kind of do some digging on what we, could we still function as a three-person board? But I without getting into a ton of details, it seems like we might be able to, but we would all have to be in agreement for something to pass.
That's my understanding, but I don't know. Like.
Yeah. Jack, did you ever thought on that?
I do. Uh, wow, you've got a problem.
I know.
You can't, you're not eligible to sign, uh, to vote on special permits. You need a super majority.
Yes.
Any, you, uh, site plan review subdivisions, A and Rs, yes.
Yep.
You all would have to be unanimous. But you need to find a new member pronto.
Yep, that was my concern as well.
And, and uh, um, what will happen is you need to get, well, where's your fifth member?
We don't have one. We, nobody ran.
You have a, you have a vacancy right now.
We have a vacancy and then.
It would take a joint meeting of you and the selectmen to interview and you, and have a majority vote of the combined board acting as one to approve a member. You need to go advertise, do something, find somebody in the bushes. You need to do that pronto. Because otherwise, a special permit application will be approved um after the statutory time. And you can't have any say and, and they'll be within their rights. You can't stop them. So you've got, I don't know, I don't know, Millville, usually the planning board adds somebody in the coffee shop too, that wants to be a.
You have to have a coffee shop to go to in order to find that.
Oh, okay. I don't know what to tell you, but I would talk, I would get on the webpage of the Facebook page. Find someone, have them submit to either Gabe or if I'm on me and we get it into the next selectman's meeting and they are approved right away.
Yep.
You have, otherwise you're in a jam. You've got a jam. You've got a problem.
Exactly. Which is why I'm bringing it up early. So if anybody knows anybody or would like to jump on Facebook and beg anyone to join our planning board.
They, Lincoln wants to be on.
Lincoln was the chairman a long time ago.
Oh.
Well, don't you have a new uh uh, I forget what the word is, part-time member, Preston Juszkiewicz?
Oh, an alternate.
He never, he never got sworn in and then we never heard from him again.
Yeah, it would work for a special permit, yeah.
Do that again, please.
That's a good one. And i- if you have an alternate that's been approved by the board of selectmen and the planning board and he's obviously or she's sworn in, then you'll, that would, that would suffice.
Yeah, it's just that we haven't been able to hear from him since the board.
They're not, they wouldn't be a permanent member of the board, but they could step in on any special permit.
And honestly, I think, I think even our appointment was only until June thirtieth. So he would have to be reappointed at this point. Um, so Reston's not an option right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Pam, you can call me.
Okay.
There you go.
All right. Um, so yeah, that's that. Was there anything else, Gabe, before I get to Jack?
No, I think that's it.
All right. So as I was saying earlier, um, uh, there are three towns, Mendon, Uxbridge and Millville. We've been awarded a grant for this project, this um inter-community project. And the idea um that Jack is here tonight is, again, correct me if I'm wrong, Jack, but kind of introducing yourself to the board and with the idea that you would potentially be that um grant-funded position to help find and um bring up to speed a planner for us that would serve all three towns?
Yeah, I, I, you missed the last meeting they had, Pam. Um, but I, I'll introduce myself. You know, I, I, I retired last August. I've been in the planning business for over thirty-seven years. I was planning director and community development director in Carver for eleven years. I was planning director in Holyoke for fifteen years. And my last stop was Hudson. I was pla, uh, director of planning and community development in Hudson for the last five years. And, and I, I worked in Northampton and West Springfield and Springfield actually uh before through smaller times, but that's where I really got my uh feet wet. Um, and I retired and I took on, a, a colleague of mine is a principal at Keller Williams, the Realtor. Uh, he's a commercial broker. And he had a couple of problem parcels in Mendon that he needed the zoning to be rewritten and um to bring it to town meeting and then hopefully sell it. And he asked if I would do it. So that's how I got involved with Mendon. Um, Kim, uh, Kim Newman, who's the town administrator in Mendon, explained to me, you guys were looking for a joint position. And she actually, and Pam will remember this, she actually asked me as a favor to interview for the job. Even though I had no interest in working full-time, I'm retired. Uh, I retired and I like it actually. Um, but then uh she, you know, if you met Kim, she's a
Persistent.
Lyley one. Uh, she um applied for this grant from the Department of Revenue and lo and behold, she got it. And she asked if I would be interested in working part-time. And the scope I put together for her and Steve from Uxbridge, Pam couldn't make the meeting, was a simple one that um I would uh work part-time for all three towns. I would assess and analyze and review all the documents and how procedures are done in the three towns. I would advertise and help interview and recommend a new planner for the three of you, a full-time planner. I would train that planner where necessary. And then at, at the end of my tenure and that piece of it, I would be, act as a resource and, and just help out. And then go off my happy way. But that, that's kind of what we, we uh talked about. Steve was in favor of it. Kim was in favor of it. Pam couldn't make the meeting. I've outlined my parameters to um to Kim and it seemed accept, acceptable. So I haven't signed a contract. I haven't done anything. And I'm on vacation. So I, I uh, I told uh Kim and Steve that uh I'd be willing, if the parameters are the same, I'd be willing to sign a contract and maybe even as early as July fifteenth. And then Connor, who is helping you find someone, told me about Gabe in Millville. I didn't know. And so Gabe and I had been chatting and he said, hey, can you make the meeting tonight? And I said, sure. So here I am.
Thanks for joining us, Jack. Um, and I know I, I didn't not, I was not able to join the meeting last week, but I had had um several meetings with Steve and Kim and Connor ahead of time, kind of talking about all of this. And I was certainly in favor of moving in this direction.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I know we've, we've had some brief conversations as a board about these types of things that have been happening. But I wanted to give you guys an opportunity to uh ask any questions that you might have and, and see what you thought.
You know, I mean, just the dialogue back and forth with uh Lincoln was helpful, you know, you you bring a different aspect, a different view to it. And honestly, I think that's a lot of what's missing with our board, unfortunately, is, you know, we're all just trying to get through and figure it out.
Yeah, it was, it wa, it was refreshing to hear experience come through.
Does that mean I'm old?
No, no. You know, like, like Cr- Chris said, like, we've kind of, you know, i- it's been hard to get some, you know, some consistency, some of the, you know, candidates we've interviewed, you know, haven't had the, the in-depth knowledge of having done the position before. And uh, so refreshing to hear some of your comments, you know, in regards to the issues Lincoln brought up. That, I was like, wow, that, that, that's nice.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. You know, one of the questions and Pam had, and maybe Kim brought this up and it's one of the reasons I met with Steve from Uxbridge is one of the issues I've always had in my career, you know, a new guy comes in, especially to a town like yours who hasn't had much professional help. And, and I realized that towns, almost every town, you know, this is the only arena you've ever been in as far as planning is concerned, as far as zoning is concerned, as far as subdivisions. Um, and, and anything else, grant writing. And so, you know, you do it the Millville way that's been passed around generation after generation. And a new guy comes in and I just want to make sure, I may suggest, I may not suggest some things that, that you've always done and it may not sit well, I guess. I don't know. I have no idea.
I think I can speak for all of us and tell you that there's, there's none of us on this board who know the Millville way of doing anything. Um, we're, we're all pretty new and kind of plugging along as we go. We're, we're volunteers that want to kind of see our town be a better place. Um, so we're, um, for, at least I'll speak for myself, we're all ears.
Yeah, open to, open to whatever suggestions can make it better and easier and more, more cohesive, you know, across the board.
When, when I started in um Hudson and, and, and they're actually very good people. They're very good people. But the chairman was chairman for thirty-seven years in Hudson. And of the planning board, the ZBA chair was chair for twenty-eight years and the conservation for twenty-eight years. It was, you know, they were entrenched and for, that's all they knew. And so it's, just want to make sure. I don't know what's gonna hap, I'm, I'm a part-time guy now. So, you know, I'm, I just wanted to have that conversation. I did have it with Steve and Kim.
I think that's fair. And I can tell you, I've been chair for about two years. And if there was somebody else who wanted it, I would give it to them.
Hey, it doesn't sound like it can even find a member. So that's all. Um, I, when I get back, I'll see uh what Kim uh needs to talk about. And I did re, Connor or Gabe, I can't remember, one of you sent me the MOU you signed.
Yeah, Connor.
Job description. Um, I'll go over the job description. It'll, it's pretty simple. Um, and I did talk to Connor about where you advertised. It, it's all straightforward. But if it's this way, you might be able to find someone who doesn't have that much experience, but has talents. And then we can help them along.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm really hopeful that this is going to be a solution that works.
Yeah. And you, you know, it's going to work for me. I could, I like staying in the, keep, keeping my finger in it, but not that much.
Just enough.
Just enough.
All right. Well, thank you, Jack. Does anybody else have anything else? I want to cut out in enough time to let them switch over to the next meeting.
No, I guess my only question off, kind of off topic is, is how do we keep it so late that we don't lose our Monday spots? Like, you know what I'm saying, where we're, I understand there's only so many spots, but like, where's, like, how do we keep getting cut out? Like, I know there's been a week or two where, you know, we, we weren't, we didn't have a forum, but I mean, obviously, it like, it gets to be a problem. And unfortunately, look, we, we all work, we all have schedules, like, you know, there's got to be a way that, no offense, everybody knows, like, the second is, the second and fourth Monday.
Have been ours for a long time, but.
Right, you know, the first and the third is the, is the board of selectmen, like, you know. I don't know if this, again, that's another topic for another night, but you know, I don't know if there's anything that can.
I do think that possibly, oh, go ahead, Lincoln.
How about go back to open meetings?
Well, that, so that was the, one of the questions I think that might have, because I thought we were having to go back to in-person this week. And then I think everything got changed at the last minute, but um, I'm not sure what the, what the deal is if we wanted to come to town hall. For us, I know in the past, it's been about finding someone who'll open the door for us.
I have a key. I'd be glad to let you in.
I'll call you next time, Lincoln. You're going to be on my speed dial after today.
Some towns have been doing hybrid, some have been doing full live and some have been staying on Zoom. I don't know. That's up.
Uh, well, if we want to make a decision about the next meeting, uh, I could just submit for the Zoom link, like earlier than we have the agenda ready and then just maybe try to get a leg up.
Yeah. I mean, personally, I'm fine with that, but whatever, you know, whatever works for Pam and Justin as well.
Yeah, I mean, neither one works for me. I don't mind if you guys want to meet in person, if you guys want to keep it Zoom. Yeah, I mean, neither one works for me, I don't mind if you guys want to meet in person, if you guys want to keep it Zoom for another, while we can, that's fine with me. But yeah, Gabe minimally, we should probably just put the agenda out, we can figure it out from there.
So the next one is, I think it's the twelfth, right? Yeah, Monday the twelfth.
Monday the twelfth.
Perfect.
Does it still work for everyone?
That works.
And that's at six thirty or six?
That's at six thirty.
All right.
jot that down, don't let anyone else take that spot.
You guys got it first, all right, so, anybody else comes around, I'll have to tell them they have to go somewhere else.
All right, you guys, oh, motion to close the meeting?
Make a motion to close the meeting at seven fifty, I'm sorry, six fifty-one.
One, it's Chris, second.
Justin's muted.
Justin?
Justin. He's done.
Can I second my own thing? Second?
Oh, he says he can't unmute.
Oh, he can't unmute.
He's seconding it over a text message right now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, nice to meet you all.
It's nice to meet you, Jack, have a good one. You guys have a good night.
You too.
Bye.